Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. A special welcome to the members of the Clay Fire Territory who keep us in Harris, Clay, and other counties or other townships safe. Thank you for being here. The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation given by Mr. Steve Dalton and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow. Creator God, we come in humility this evening. We have decisions to make about this county. We have disappointments, we have frustrations, we maybe are even frustrated with each other. But Father, we pray that you would give us both mercy and grace and wisdom to be able to make decisions together for the peace of this community, for the better of this community. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next, our petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9, 2025, public hearing?
Mr. President?
Mr. Katanzerite?
I spoke to Admin Assistant Jen, and we amended the minutes slightly. So I agree with Diana's motion. However, I just want to say as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Hess and a second by Councilman Katanzerite to pass the amended September 9, 2025 minutes.
As amended.
To accept them as amended?
Yes.
Okay.
So I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September as amended.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Hess to accept the amended meeting minutes from September the 9th and seconded by Councilman Katanzrite. Clerk, will you please take the roll? I'm sorry, we don't need to do that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes. The minutes of the September 9, 2024, public hearing have been approved. Before we continue, I would like to mention that the rezoning of the Third Data Center north of New Carlisle is not on the agenda tonight. The council will address that bill later this month in committee. Now, we would like to amend the agenda to move Bill 83-25 to after first readings. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to move 83-25 to after first readings?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Katanzrite, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that the amended, the vote to amend the agenda to move Bill 83-25 to after first readings passed nine to zero. Are there any other petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters? Are there any board appoint, seeing no board appointments, we move on to county auditor's report?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. County Commissioners?
No report at this time.
Thank you. President Baxmeyer, report for any council special committees? I don't believe we have any. So let's go ahead and move on to first readings. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 81-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 113, Massage Establishers/Massage Therapists of the St. Joseph County Code, which shall be known and amended as the St. Joseph County Massage Establishments/Therapy Ordinance. Petitioner: Health Department.
Thank you. Bill Number 81-25 is assigned to the Health and Human Services Committee. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 82-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154, Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 26395 State Road 2 Highway and 56450 Quince Road from R Single Family District and C Commercial District Site Plan Specific to C Commercial District. Petitioner: RR Property LLC.
Bill Number 81-25, I'm sorry, Bill Number 82-25 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. We move on to resolutions. Clerk, could you please read Bill Number 83-25?
A resolution to honor Fire Marshal David Sharone.
Petitioner?
A resolution to honor Fire Marshal David Sharone, whereas David Sharone served longer than any other service member in Clay Fire's history, dedicating 52 years of his life to the safety and protection of his community. Whereas David Sharone, a Clay High School grad and Clay Township native, started his career at just 17, when his parents signed consent forms allowing him to volunteer for the department that would become the focus of the rest of his life. Whereas David Sharone embodied Clay Fire's mission to help others through the work he did to keep St. Joseph County residents safe from harm, whether through his work as the township's first EMT, the fire programs he instituted, the news segments he aired, or the kids' safety house and children's library sessions he brought to the community. Whereas David Sharone had both a desire to teach and a desire to learn, providing field trips and classes for fellow residents, both young and old, and continuing to educate himself even after retirement, when he completed a bachelor's degree in fire and emergency management from Purdue University Global. Whereas David Sharone was a man so cherished by his fellow firemen and women that he was sent home in a vintage fire engine upon his retirement. Whereas Clay Fire was such an integral part of David Sharone's life, he continued to come back to the station even after his retirement, visiting and sharing stories with the fire community he loved. Whereas David Sharone was, is, and always will be a presence at Clay Fire, where his recent passing, just a few short years after his retirement, saw an overwhelming outpouring of love and sentiment by the Clay community he served. Whereas David Sharone, as loved by the Clay Fire family as he was, was only outmatched in adoration by his own family, his wife Izzy of 47 years, his children Joe and Lisa, Lisa who even followed her dad's footsteps and works at South Bend Fire, and Lisa's husband David and their grandchildren Eli, Gavin, and Austin. Whereas David Sharone demonstrates a life well-lived, an example of mentorship and dedication, and inspiration for how we can all be better citizens and use our gifts to the community we serve. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Joseph County Council commends Mr. David Sharone for his many accomplishments and for his contributions to Clay Township and St. Joseph County, and for all he has done to make Clay Fire a shining example in the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Councilwoman Drake. Are there any questions from Council for Councilwoman Drake? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. On Bill Number 83-25, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Come up to the mic and speak in favor. Anyone? All righty. Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? All right. Simply as a formality, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 83-25. And Ms. Drake, is there anyone you wanted to bring up to speak at this time?
Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? That? Okay.
No, we're good?
Go ahead.
All right, we're good. Very good. Any further comments from council members? Mr. Katanzrite?
I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about Fire Marshal Dave Sharone, because I've known him for well over 40 years. I got my start at Clay Fire when I was 16 as a cadet, and he took me under his wing along with a couple of guys that are out in this audience, Jim Hummel, a couple of the old timers that are still around, Lane Wright, Mill Billow. But Dave had a special way of taking you under his wing and showing you the ropes, and he was also very comical and always liked to play pranks and jokes. But nonetheless, very professional. He was a consummate professional in what he did. He was committed to the safety and well-being of everybody in our community, not just Clay Fire Territory. A few years ago, he met a person out of La Porte County who had lost their daughter to a carbon monoxide poisoning, and we tried to champion, we did pass a resolution here on the council to ask our state legislature to make it part of the state building code to require carbon monoxide alarms in buildings. However, we were unsuccessful to convince the state legislature, but Dave did champion that issue. I know it hurt him deeply that we didn't get that passed on the state level. It's something we all should still be striving for, was to get carbon monoxide monitoring in all buildings, as Dave wanted. But nonetheless, had the pleasure of working with him for years, knew him when he was just a firefighter. Then he became a lieutenant, a captain, and an assistant chief, finally a fire marshal. But he's known throughout the state of Indiana and other places for who he was and all the good things that he did. Had the pleasure of working with Lisa on South Bend Fire. She's become one of the great assets of the South Bend Fire Department. I'm sure your dad's smiling down at all the accomplishments you've made and the good things you're doing on the South Bend Fire Department, as one of the great firefighters there too. So had the pleasure of working for Dave and his wife Izzy, who's here in the audience, when they owned a little wheelchair ambulance service here in town. And Izzy got to call me in the mornings after I got off a shift from being a dispatcher and waking me up when I had forgotten, overslept to go pick up somebody, take them to their appointment, but she always was able to wake me up. But good people who were salt of the earth and have done a lot for our community, especially Clay Fire. So hats off to you, Dave, and Izzy, and Joe and Lisa, and everybody here who's from Clay Fire.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzrite. Any other comments? Seeing none, may I have a motion on Bill Number 83-25?
Motion to approve Bill 83-25?
Second. Motion to approve from Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Thomas. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 83-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you, folks.
If the family wants to come up and take a photo, and after the family photo, we can have a photo with everybody.
All righty. Next, our second readings and public hearings on solid waste management, airport authority, and the St. Joseph County 2026 budget. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 70-25?
Ordinance for Appropriation and Tax Rates, Budget Form 4, Solid Waste.
Petitioner?
No.
Do we need a petitioner?
Yeah, right. Motion for passage.
All right.
Second.
Oh, okay. Don't worry about questions, we're going right to the motion. Sorry. All right. We didn't have a petitioner to ask questions to anyway. So we have a motion from Mr. Katanzrite and a second from Mr. Fig. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
That was yes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 70-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 71-25?
Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Budget Form 4, Airport Authority.
All right. We'll, I guess, the same format here. Any comments from council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion for approval of Bill Number 71-25?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill Number 71-25 was made by Councilman Tanner, seconded by Councilwoman Shabaz. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 71-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 73-25?
Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Budget Form 4, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
All righty. Any questions from council or comments from council?
I like my comment.
Yes, Mr. Fig?
This is my fourth budget. The first three budgets, I voted yes. Tonight, I'm going to vote no, and I thought I should let you know, the public and the council here. First of all, I want to say I want to thank Mr. Murphy, our auditor, he did a great job, and Deputy Auditor Abby did a great job, nothing against you folks. And our department heads, I see one back there, you did a great job. I wish we could vote on each department. It'd be, make, I think, make my job a little bit easier. But there's two things I have issues with tonight, without going in great detail. One was the, a raise that was put in, and it was, the letter was sent out, no raises, so this one was there, and that did trouble me. And the second thing, too, that bothered me was the parks. I like parks, Potato Creek's in my district, I like going to Potato Creek. But I was looking at theirs, and they have an increase of almost 14%. And just looking at that, I just didn't care for that. And also, I didn't like that they're going to lose mon, I went, not lose money, but they're going to, their cash reserve's going to go down next year, and in two years, we're going to have more issues. So I'm really concerned about that one. So those are the two reasons why I'm voting no tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Rutten?
So this council with the commissioners spent a lot of time going with a fine-toothed comb through each and every fund that this county operates on. And, you know, a lot of hard work. We interviewed each and every department. I think it was a very, a very good effort to promote fiscal responsibility. I do continue to have some concerns, and I want to list them specifically. The prosecutor has a Fund 4941, may have some issues with funding in the future. The Community Corrections Department, Fund 9125. The county has a training fund, 1156, that may have some issues with funding in the future. The JJC has a program that I think relies on grants, but may not have very well-defined funding in the future. The highway has an unrestricted paving fund that the county relies on quite a bit to pave the roads, and funding's always an issue with the highway department. The surveyor has a corner fund, 1202, that also has some, some issues with its long-term funding forecast. So I think that, that this county, this council, and each department has done a good, really good job of trying to set up their budget in 2026, given that the, the state of Indiana has, has passed legislation to reduce the, the funding sources that this county relies upon. So I don't really want to, to sound pessimistic, but fiscal responsibility is, is still fiscal responsibility. It has to happen all the time with every fund. So with these funds, I hope that in the future, the, and, and all the other funds, that the county can make sure that they're, they're sustainable with their funding so that we could be fully fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzrite?
In contrast to my two colleagues that are going to vote against it, I'm going to be voting for this tonight, the raise that was mentioned by Randy is a raise we knew about, that the commissioners have been pushing for, for a couple of budget cycles to try and get for a certain position, and it's not for the individual, but it's for the And when that department was able to make that raise happen, and, and the individual that is getting that raise didn't ask for the raise, the commissioners came to us and asked for the raise. They were able to get the raise accomplished that the commissioners and some of the people in the council have been pushing for, and do that while returning more money back to the general funds. There was no additional cost. And yes, I do understand, we did ask them, all department heads, to not push for a raise. So that department head didn't push for a raise, as far as I know. In terms of the parks, I mean, what better investment to make in our parks at a time when people need to be outside recreating? I find it hard to believe we're going to block or increase in the park budget. The park budget's the one that always typically doesn't get much of an increase. But nonetheless, I will be voting to support this tonight. I think it's, we've all done our due diligence in terms of going through line item by line item, and I was proud of the work that we all did. So I will be supporting the budget tonight.
Anyone else? All righty. I do have a, something I'd like to say. In reference to the $30,000 raise for Mr. Shalio, I'm going to read something that I wrote recently about this and then make a comment. I would, I would like to start with the argument that I never again want to be required by restricted finances to tell our employees that they will not get a raise. Inflation, meaning performance metrics, and increased duties require the council to consider a raise for our employees each year. An across-the-board raise was simply not possible in the 2026 budget due to Senate Bill 1's, and that's Indiana Senate Bill 1's, effect on property taxes as referenced, as I had referenced previously. Given that property taxes are St. Joseph County government's largest source of revenue, and that those revenues will probably decrease significantly over the course of the next few years as Senate Bill 1 takes full effect, we must find other sources of revenue. How do we bring in new sources of revenue? Entice businesses to operate in St. Joseph County and use the associated business and income taxes to replace the property taxes, or property tax dollars that you and I have been paying. Every county in the state of Indiana has been dealt this same hand and is looking for ways to replace funds. Here in St. Joe County, we have an ace in the hole. Based on the value of projects brought to a community over the last three years, Bill Shalio is the best county economic director in the state of Indiana, hands down. He has brought in over $20 billion of investment, including the GM Samsung Battery Plant, Microsoft Data Center, and the Amazon Data Centers, the largest single investment by a company in the history of the state of Indiana. Mr. Shalio is bringing in the businesses that will pay taxes, that replace our property taxes, so that county services such as roads and bridge repair, health services, police, and prosecutor duties, and other key components of county government do not have to be cut. And in future years, we will be able to give our employees raises. Bill is doing this at a salary of $120,000 a year. According to ZipRecruiter, the average salary for an Economic Development Director of the state of Indiana is just over $117,000 a year, with the high being $192,000 a year. The position pays $120,000 a year or more in Warsaw, Gary, Elkhart, Bloomfield, Crawfordsville, and Carmel, among others. I believe Mr. Shalio's pay needs to reflect his unmatched success and keep him working for the citizens of St. Joseph County. That was my argument about three weeks ago for why I supported the raise. And I still believe that argument. However, given the fact that we gave our other employees no raise, and given the fact that I have received some pushback from our citizens on singling out one person to get a raise, I am going to offer an amendment to this budget, asking to remove the raise for Mr. Shalio, hoping that next year, we can do him right. So I offer this amendment to remove the raise for Mr. Shalio from the 2026 budget. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question before you get your second?
Yes, sir.
There's been no public hearing about this, and I just kind of wonder, Mr. Attorney, can we do this?
We had a public hearing, I believe.
Didn't we have all this amendment?
Last meeting?
Yeah, we had a public hearing on this, but not on the amendment. That's what I'm asking. Can we do that tonight?
I don't know. I have to look at, catch me on the fly. I didn't know that this was going to be before a series.
You want a public hearing on the amendment?
Well, an amendment, yeah.
To remove the $30,000 raise?
Well, maybe somebody out there that want to keep it in. That's what I'm saying, you know? What, what if we do amendment tonight that we're going to increase everybody's raise? I mean, everybody's pay.
We cannot pass a budget that is higher than what was advertised to the public.
Mr.?
All of our amendments in any public meeting come after the public hearing, so I, I don't particularly anticipate that there's an issue with this.
We have had a public hearing. So I'm asking for a second. Seeing none, the amendment dies.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Can you do what, sir?
Ask a question.
Sure.
So proposal to make amendment didn't pass. Is it possible to table this to next? So proposal to make amendment didn't pass. Is it possible to table this to next month?
We have to pass the budget before November 1st.
Yes. We can't do that.
Okay.
Okay, so the amendment was offered by myself to remove the $30,000 raise for Mr. Shalio. There was no second, so the amendment dies. Since we've already had the public hearing on this bill, may I have a motion?
Motion for passage, Bill 7325.
Second.
We have a motion for passage by Mr. Katanzerite and seconded by Mr. Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rutton. I'm sorry, out of order. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
No.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Rutton?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes. Five-four.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 73-25 passed five to four. I would also like to mention, this is the third year I've been on the council, and the third year in a row that we have passed a balanced budget, which I think in this day and age, and given how our federal government behaves, is an accomplishment.
That's true.
Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 74-25?
An ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County, Indiana for the year 2026.
Petitioner?
This is the same thing. This is a companion with 7325. We integrate those.
All right. Very good. We need a motion then on Bill Number 74-25 if there are no council comments.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion for approval from Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
No.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mr. Rutton?
Can you tell me, I'm sorry, I was signing this document. Can you remind me again what we're voting on?
This is the salary ordinance portion. We integrate 73 and 25 and 74, 25 into one. We call it the budget, but it really is the budget and also the salary ordinance. So it's, that's the content of it.
All right. No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes, absolutely.
And President Shetzel? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
And President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes five-four.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 74-25 was passed by a vote of five to four. And again, let's be, I think, let's thank everybody who worked in this process for three years in a row now, balanced budgets. I would like to take a moment to thank the gentleman sitting in front of me and the young lady for their hard work, for the commissioners, and it's not easy passing a balanced budget. There are moments that are difficult, for sure, and there are long evenings involved. And everybody, thank you for your work. All right. Clerk, will you please read? We now move on to salary amendments. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 80-25?
An ordinance amending ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Committee report, Councilwoman Hess.
President Shetzel, this bill comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, excuse me. Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're here tonight to ask for appropriation and salary amendment to take money from the prosecutor's stop grant for 2025, 2026. It's grant fund 8106, in the amount of $171,286. It's a continuation grant, and it'll fund the partial salaries for the special victims unit. Three attorneys, two paralegals, and three victim advocates. It does require a 25% match, which is provided in the 2025 prosecutor's budget. Your approval will be appreciated.
All right. Are there any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 80-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 80-25. Any further comment from council members? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Fig, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 80-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 79-25?
An ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Because all fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at the September 2025 committee meeting, we will move directly to public comment on Bill Number 79-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 79-25. Any further council comments? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion for approval by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill 79-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. We now move on to miscellaneous matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 77-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing an appendix schedule of fines and fees for the St. Joseph County Department of Health. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Department of Health.
Councilwoman Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, this bill comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner?
Hi, Mike Ruble, Director of Operations for the Department of Health, offices on the 8th and 9th floors. We're requesting your support to amend and supplement some of our fees for the Department of Health for, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have, largely, these fees are covering in three areas. We have added some additional fees, which are based on convenience fees. These are services that, when benchmarked versus other counties, these are fees that allow the public to have services on a faster pace, or they're able to do it on an online basis. So it saves them time overcoming into the county. They're fully optional. They are able to come into the office to receive all the services at the normal fees. Some of the fees also fall into immunization raises. Unfortunately, our supplier for our immunizations did notify us that some of the fees did rise for the year, and so we have to basically recoup the costs of those immunizations. And the final category, we did look at certain fees that has not been raised in several years, about four to five years, and we benchmarked those versus four counties around the state. And then adjustments were made depending on what we were seeing, what was common around the state, and counties compared to us. And we request your support to make those changes, please.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 77-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone in the room like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill Number 77-25. May I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion for approval by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilwoman Chabaz. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill 77-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 76-25?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land uses, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 18088 Legacy Village Court and 122 Legacy Village Court from PUD Plan Unit Development District to PUD Plan Unit Development District. Petitioner, RWD Campus Development LLC.
Councilman Katanzerite, committee report, please.
Mr. Shetzel, Bill 7625 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions? I'm sorry, petitioner?
Oh, yeah, Area Plan Director, Sean Klein, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. So petitioner seeks to rezone to allow for the development standards for the Legacy Village Court PUD to be amended. The only changes they are proposing is to allow three-story structures, which are actually what were ultimately built on the property when it was constructed. And they want to change the provision that only allows for six unrelated persons to live in one town home, to allow up to eight. However, they are capping the total residency for the 14 townhomes together at 98 persons. So even if they do fill some with eight people, the ultimate increase in occupancy is only going to be 14 people overall. The PUD, again, 14 townhouses for off-campus housing. That's looking in from the rear entrance, townhomes on site. And then from the front entrance, Little Flower Church to the south. And then there's some insurance businesses to the immediate east and north. And then across Ironwood, there are single-family homes, or are single-family. Again, all that's really being changed is allowing for up to eight unrelated occupants per townhome, and the height going from 44 feet or two stories to three stories, because these are three-story townhomes. It won't allow for any additional buildings, structures, or uses, or anything like that. And this does come to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation that was made six to zero. Have you answered any questions?
Any questions from council for the petitioner? All right. Seeing none, we will open the public hearing on Bill Number 76-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please give us, all right.
This is the representative.
Sure.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'm Matt Schramm with Creek de Volte, 4101 Edison Lakes Parkway, Mishawaka, Indiana, Suite 100. And I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. I know everyone's read and listened to the staff report, and I don't want to waste your time by rehashing the presentation that was given at the Area Plan Commission or the Land Use Committee. Instead, I'll start with briefly summarizing what exactly we're asking to do. And effectively, we're asking to amend the existing PUD, which was approved in 2009, 2010. I think procedurally, it's physically replacing the existing PUD with a new PUD that's substantially the same in all material respects, except for those two areas. One, we're asking to increase the maximum residence per group home, and there's 14 of these group homes, per home from six unrelated residents to eight unrelated residents, which would be easily accomplished with changing the two largest bedrooms to two-person instead of single occupancy. And we're capping the total residence to 98. So it would only be an increase of 14, even if we hit that max. The second thing is, we're just looking to change the number of stories permitted to three stories, to match how everything was originally designed and ultimately constructed. We're not looking to make any changes, any physical changes to the exterior or interior anywhere on the property or within the units. We did receive the unanimous favorable recommendation from the APC. We received the recommendation from the Land Use Planning Committee. We also received letters of support from several of the neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the property, including Little Flower Catholic Church. And notably, 15 to 16 years ago, when this was first up for approval, Little Flower Catholic Church was one of the most vocal opponents to this project. Over the years, they've developed a strong relationship with the ownership and with the residents of Legacy Village, and have now, you know, written a letter indicating their strong support. They noted that many of the residents over the last 16 years have been important participants, both in the church services and in regular church activities. The church will in turn use Legacy Village as overflow parking for, you know, in the summer and other instances when students aren't around. You know, both of these neighbors, they also spoke highly of the efforts of ownership. I've got one of the owners here with me, but they've made a lot of effort in engaging the neighbors and the rest of the surrounding community, trying to go above and beyond to be good neighbors. And ultimately, this is a development that's a positive for the area. It's high-quality, well-maintained student housing, close to Notre Dame's campus. It's very involved and attentive ownership, really goes out of their way to engage with the neighbors and tries to resolve any issues that come up. The changes we're requesting will have a negligible impact, if any, on the surrounding community, and it's for all of these reasons that we ask for your approval for this plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Rutton?
Well, man, I'd like to commend you for the...
Well, ma'am, I'd like to commend you for the responsible development here. I think this is a great idea to try to better utilize existing development. You know, any concerns there might have been about, is the density too high? Is there going to be any fire risk? I mean, we just had the whole clay fire here and, you know, so they obviously don't have any concerns about that. So if the students are going to be, you know, up partying on Saturday night, are they going to be able to still go to church at Little Flower the next morning?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Anyone else? All righty.
Thank you.
Go ahead and then continue with public comment. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone? Oh, yes, sir. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Gene Tadebeck. I live at 1734 Port Jav. And I actually wasn't planning on speaking about this topic, but I think when it comes to housing, more is more. And the only way to combat, you know, price inequities in housing is by building more of it. And so I would encourage the council to adopt this and to actually, like, do more in the future. I think this is really good. I think more housing is more housing. I think that's good.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone on? Mr. Francis?
Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive. I live out near there. It's not that I'm against this particular proposal, but the precedent it sets. And forgive me if I'm wrong about this, but did they build the three-story when it was not permitted to do so? And that this is an after-the-fact sort of re-permitting of that? I question that. I think that we have to have some concern about density and about the neighborhood, although we've heard, you know, people, we haven't heard from anybody directly out there who's against it. But I can tell you that there are problems brewing around Notre Dame as more and more of these dense developments occur and student housing moves further out from the university in the neighborhoods. So while I'm sure you're going to vote for this, I don't know that it's not a good project. I think the precedent of changing something after the fact, I don't know why no one asked that question. Why, how were they able to build this in the first place without the, when they were not permitted to do so? And then, you know, from six to eight, not a huge increase in density. However, it's, you know, it is a lot of partying that goes on. And it's encroaching upon the neighborhoods, the single-family neighborhoods around Little Flower and across Ironwood. So just be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, any further comments from council members? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Shetzel. Representative of the petitioner, would you mind actually coming back up? My statement's actually more of a question. What Mr. Francis noted, I actually made a mental note of whenever this was presented in committee. By and large, because of the support or lack of opposition, my concerns were allayed a little bit. The third story, is it possible that that was originally planned as attic space that's been built out since the original plan of the project, to your knowledge?
That's possible. Obviously, I wasn't, you know, representing the petitioner at that time. I do know in the existing PUD, in some areas, it mentions two stories and some it mentions two and a half. You know, I guess, I'm not sure how that half-story is defined, if they were thinking that that included the, you know, those two bedrooms on that top floor. Bob, do you have any?
No, counsel, Robert Kohlstad, owner and partner of RWD Campus Developments. The homes were always going to be six-bedroom homes. On the site plan, they were listed as two and a half stories in one place, two stories in another, much like a one-and-a-half-story home is one where you have bedrooms on the second floor and a master on the first floor. I think this was really just an administrative issue where the building and everything else, this never changed from the original site plan. They were always going to be six-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathroom units.
Scrivener's error, perhaps?
I've got to believe that. It wasn't caught at the time in 2009 when this originally went through, but I have to believe it was just an error there. And two-and-a-half stories, I think, was the intent. But again, we chose at this time, since we were doing an amendment to the PUD, to better clarify that so there was no misunderstanding of what two-and-a-half stories meant.
Thank you for that explanation or, you know, the attempt to bring back history. I think to Mr. Francis's point, it's probably something that needed to be cleared up in the good faith effort that you've made, but it probably is bad precedent to make approvals of things that weren't built correctly in the first place, if that's the way we're going to think about it. But I commend you on your effort, and I appreciate that you brought this before us.
Thank you.
Any further council comments? All right. Seeing none, may I have a motion on Bill number 76-25?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Rutton, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill 76-25 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. We now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? My fellow Republicans, you sure you don't want to go back and give me a second on that amendment? You all were pretty adamant that Mr. Shalio didn't deserve that raise. All right, I guess that business is finished then. Any new business?
Was that?
All right.
Can I call a point of order? Was that a comment on unfinished business?
Sure.
Okay. I just wasn't familiar with how unfinished business worked, so I just, thank you.
All righty. We move on now to privilege of the floor. Please listen carefully to the following announcement. The public is invited to address the council on any item that was not on tonight's agenda. A time limit of three minutes shall be enforced for those wishing to speak during privilege of the floor. Before you speak, please sign in and then give your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only once during this section of the agenda. Please use appropriate language and volume when addressing the council. Also, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council. Please refrain from directing your remarks to other members of the public who are in attendance tonight. Violations of these instructions could result in the forfeiture of your remaining time. Finally, the council does not normally respond to questions or comments posed during privilege of the floor. And with that, we would like to hear from our first guest.
Thank you. Dan Caruso, New Carlyle. Thank you for your work and all your oversight of what goes on in our county. Mr. Shetzel, when I walked in tonight, you were quick to say, that's not being heard tonight. We're aware of that. We are also aware that there's a lot of arm twisting going on behind the scenes, trying to get a favorable rezoning vote from the county council, whenever they can get it. We do our arm twisting more publicly. We put signs in our yards. We speak out at events like this. We don't submit people to non-disclosure agreements. We get up here and we speak for what we feel, in this instance, is best for our end of the county, for St., for New Carlyle and all of township. But I also speak for the county as a whole on all other projects. And on this project, I know there's some of you on the council who, actually, I have formed my position based on what several of you have indicated, that let's wait till the dust settles on what we've got with the Amazon development there. And Amazon is their own worst enemy, is our worst, your worst enemy at this point, because we don't know how much water they're going to use until they quit expanding. They get one part of their project done and they say, let's expand a little more. Let's expand a little more. Each one of those expansions is going to use more water, more energy. I don't know whether this third project north of 20 on 1,057 acres is good or bad. It could be that once Amazon begins operation, is fully operational, GM is going, we see how much water they're using, how much energy, how much of our electrical grid they're draining, whether there's rolling brownouts, whether there's any issues from that. Let them, those projects be up and fully operating and determine how much water's in the aquifer, if there is water, if there is energy that can support this project. But we're not going to be able to do that until Amazon quits expanding. Get set with what you want, go with it, so then we can determine when you're 100% operational whether we can support another project. But until we do that and you keep expanding, we don't know what any, we don't know what resources are going to be left for anybody else. So my friends, all of you are my friends. But I would hope that we proceed with caution here, because, I mean, we could be in the middle of somebody putting a hole in the ground and being told, oh, sorry, you can't build there because we're out of water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, this is Gene Tadebeck again, and I signed in. And I guess, I'm a resident of South Bend. I don't live in New Carlyle, but I am a Hoosier, and I'm deeply concerned about the impacts of these projects, the data center project specifically. And what I want to focus on is return on investment. And as far as I can tell, the expansion of data centers is, the recent expansion of data centers is really closely tied to, you know, the tech industry's desire to invest in AI, which has no proven return on investment. And typically, as a gentleman said, these data centers, not only have they benefited from rezoning, but they've also benefited from really generous tax breaks from the state of Indiana. So we're giving up tax base for a business that has no proven way of being profitable, right? And the proposed use cases would drive millions of people, millions of Americans, including Hoosiers, out of jobs, right? So like, if the proposed use case works out, it's going to have a devastating social impact. And I don't understand why we would forego tax dollars, why we would accept a horrific cost at a loss. Like, it doesn't make sense. Speaking of return on investment, the jobs generated, because that's usually the argument, is that this is going to produce jobs, this produces construction jobs. When the construction of the data center is done, those jobs go away. I mean, like, does anybody imagine that a data center is going to employ thousands of people? Look, no, this is like, you're going to need somebody to wash the doors and a couple engineers, right? So like, the only jobs that these programs are going to generate are construction, those are temporary. I mean, like, you know, all love to our construction workers, but these are temporary jobs. And there's no proven, like, use, there's no proposed use case for these things. And to the extent that there is, it would damage us socially and economically. And even that is completely, it's conjecture, right? So there's no proven use case, the jobs are temporary. And then we get into the long-term costs. And this is back to what my fellow assistant was talking about. So like, where are farmers going to get their water? Where are folks who live in non-incorporated areas going to get their water? When the wells run dry, who do they go to? And so there's, and so the predicted return on investment is, like, if we're being frank, it's nothing. It's negative. And there's no way of...
Your time is up.
Thank you. That's, no ROI.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Bott Senior. I live at 304 East Michigan Street in New Carlyle. And the question I pose to you is, is it possible for the human race to become extinct? And I know this is super extreme, but if you look, and actually, AI-generated is talking about this, and it says it's in the near future, maybe not, but there's four things that could cause the human race to go extreme, to go extinct. Climate change, nuclear war, pandemic, and artificial intelligence. And I'm just thinking, I look out onto that 1,000 acres that they're talking about, I live on the corner of the Prancer House up on the hill as you walk into New Carlyle. That is such beautiful country. And I just hate to see a building go up there and losing all that farmland, losing the growth potential there, and of course, the electrical grid and the water that's going to consume is very concerning to me. So I ask that you think about that and think about the long-term consequences of another data center when we already have Amazon coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I guess it's close enough. I'm Jan Servelli. I'm Dean Emerita of the College of Architecture and Planning at University of Arizona and Professor at St. Mary's College and Resident of Granger. So I share this with you. St. Joe County leadership seems to be flailing in its oversight of huge hyper-data center development. According to recent reports, the council and the redevelopment commission are not on the same page when it comes to its own comprehensive land use plan and data centers. Worse yet, discussions concerning major economic development issues are cloaked in the secrecy of non-disclosure agreements, NDAs. The county has not shared basic facts regarding the newest 1,000-acre data center proposals, such as the identity of the company behind the proposal, nor associated development agreements outlining tax abatements, infrastructure investments, and other county obligations. Nor has the mystery company shared with the public essential facts about the basic operations of the proposed center. I attended the September 16 Area Plan Commission meeting to hear the developer's lawyer present the proposed budget, project, excuse me. To say that the proposal was thin on important details is an understatement. I would have given it an F. This is not acceptable. What's the mystery company trying to hide? It's no wonder the Area Plan Commission voted seven zero against. We're not a clueless, unengaged community. NDAs can limit what information can be disclosed to the public and stifle community input. Data center waste and energy use should not be cut from the public on projects of such scale and magnitude of public investment. If such projects are truly in the public interest as claimed, the project should be able to withstand public scrutiny. More importantly, the conduct of county business in a shroud of secrecy defies basic notions of local control and democracy. The county appears to be taking a blind man's approach to oversight of data center developments. Few requirements on water and energy usage appear to have been put into place by the county on previous developments. The identity of the newest potential company has grown into a shadowy figure lurking across northwestern St. Joe County. Is it Meta, Microsoft, Amazon, Google? Is everyone in the dark outing Meta and then have to retract? Why has the council and the redevelopment commission agreed to such secrecy? It leads one to question, who is in charge? By all accounts, it would appear the mystery end user is in charge. Cities and counties across the country are waking up to tactics such as... Cities and counties across the country are waking up to tac, tactics such as these used by data companies to bypass public scrutiny. So I ask that you get your stuff together and help lead these decisions on behalf of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, your time is up. Please, folks, we, we, we generally don't allow clapping after someone speaks, so let's try to avoid that, please.
Hello, thank you, everyone. My name's Kay West Hughes. I live at 216 West Madison Street. I'm an artist and I've centered a lot of my work around water. And one of my, you know, big concerns is the use of water and also the fact that the data center sits on the headwaters of the Kankakee River, which is an unconfined aquifer, which used to be protected. For some reason, it's not anymore. I haven't really had any justification as to why it's not protected anymore. And it's very concerning to me because aquifers can go dry. Ask communities such as Danville, Illinois, who had like lots of artesian wells that are no longer running. So yes, things can go dry. And I think what, what all my colleagues out here have said, I, I second all that. And I, I really urge you guys to drive this and not let someone else make the agenda for you and represent the citizens here who really need representation. I want to talk about one more thing, which is aesthetics. If, if this new development looks anything like the development we already have, nobody's going to want to drive down Chicago Trail, ride their bikes down Chicago Trail, do motorcycle rides around in there, which is a big thing. People love doing that in this community, not only in South Bend, but, you know, that's a very scenic area that people love to, you know, there's rolling hills, it's nice farmland. It's going to be destroyed. And then, once these companies go out of business, we'll be left with these big empty buildings and, you know, no tax income from that. So that's, I just wanted to share all of that with you. I won't go to the end because I'm at the end of my thing, but thank you.
John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax. Ben Franklin proved lightning to be electricity way back in 1752. In 1834, Thomas Davenport, a Vermont blacksmith, invented the first practical electric motor. It powered a printing press. Thereafter, the flow of man-controlled electrons, the electric charge, slowly grew from a trickle to become a broad river by the first half of the 20th century. That growing flood of electrons enabled the internet to explode into America's consciousness in the early 90s and grow to the enormous source of information, both true and untrue, both true and false, it has become. And now, the internet has become the playground of artificial intelligence, AI, an inhuman intelligence controlled by a tiny cadre of multi-billionaires likely to bring us to a future so dark no dystopian novel could possibly encompass it. The internet we all know and use daily cannot exist without electricity. That flood of electrons, we assume, will last forever. Electricity doesn't happen without energy. Its primary sources still the drivers of our warming climate, coal, oil, and natural gas. Since the 1950s, our need for electricity and therefore the energy to produce it has metastasized into a logarithmic curve now reaching perpendicularity. As we all know, the rise in, of AI and cryptocurrency, not to mention time fillers like TikTok, demands flows of electricity through massive hyperscale data center campuses like the 32 structures Amazon is building in our county. The oligarchs who run these mega tech companies intend such data centers to grow from a current level of approximately 613 in this country to anywhere from 2, 2100 to 1,400 by 2030. Meanwhile, the same oligarchs are looking to AI to reduce the number of employees per data center. Google answered my question on the subject with this, quote, this is Google. With maximum AI integration and robotization, a hyperscale data center could potentially be operated with a minimum of onsite staff of around 20 to 50 human workers. So for a minimum number of employees added to our workforce, we get Michigan City's coal power plant pumping poison beyond its retirement date of 2028? For 20 to 50 human workers per center, we get skyrocketing utility bills? I say no. No to the oligarchs who use these resource gobbling data centers to control by their algorithms and manipulate what we see, hear, and read. No more.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township. You know, originally, this was introduced back in April, you know, that petitioner has had plenty of time, if they intended to make changes to this, six months is a lot of time. They didn't do so. When they first found out, in fact, that there might be opposition, significant opposition by your constituents throughout the county, not just out in New Carlisle, they suddenly started to go, oh, whoa, wait, we need to back up a little bit. Originally, we were going to have the hearing tonight. That got put off. We know the petitioner is meeting with each and every one of you individually. I only hope that you will meet with each and every one of us individually, or a group of us, so that there is fair representation to you as you head towards making a fateful decision in one month. I want to read something from the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, recently passed by you, Area Plan Commission. I worked on the Economic Development Work Group, spent many, many hours working on that group. It says on page 130, because I don't expect you to go back and read it, "The historic town of New Carlisle can be found in the western portion of the township." The new town of New Carlisle's 2040 Comprehensive Plan defines land uses proposed within and around the town's boundaries. As development pressure continues, intergovernmental coordination will be critical to ensure that land use decisions reflect the future land use map. You're right there in the middle of this intergovernmental decision. The town of New Carlisle has, has already asserted they are against this third data center in St. Joe County. It is outside the core development area, it's outside the industrial enterprise center, it's north of US 20, it's in the midst, plopped down in the midst of agricultural land. And further down, on page 130, intensive agricultural uses are planned in both southern and northern regions of the township, all of township. Long-term agricultural use will conserve the 100-year flood plains and retain prime farmland. That's exactly what the Comprehensive Plan says. This is meant to be retained as intensive ag, not as an expansion of industrial sprawl that is disrupting the historic town of New Carlisle and the residents who live there with congestion, traffic, tapping into the pristine aquifer, raising electricity rates, and then gobbling up the agricultural land around New Carlisle. It will not look the same if you make this decision. So as we head towards November, they don't put it off another month, I hope you meet with each and every one of us, look over the Comprehensive Plan, look over the town of New Carlisle Plan, and then make your decision accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Anyone else in the room wish to speak during privilege of the floor? Anyone online wish to speak during privilege of the floor? Mary?
I think Mary's hand was up first.
Okay, Mary, I think your hand was up first.
Thank you, Mary Countryman, 52959, Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I encourage all of you to read the Indy Star and several other articles that talk about the IEDC, the Indiana Economic Development Corporation or Center Corporation, corporation that uncovers blatant violations of public trust in a pit, and this is an opinion letter that I've, I'm reading right now, but there have been several articles about the problems with the IEDC. And the IEC in New Carlisle has been called the Junior IEDC, the little brother of IEDC. And there's a lot of questions about it and the IEDC and the money being shut off for that because of the audits finding some messes and not, not very accurate findings in the audits they're doing. But, so some of the money may be cut off for some of the projects that are associated with New Carlisle, if they, if they're associated with that financially. But more so, looking at, deep down at home, for all of us that worked on that Comprehensive Plan, for all of us that put in hours, this is such an insult to us. This is an insult to the town of New Carlisle, the agreement that was made between them. And I just, I, I don't understand how there could be anything of, any exception of saying that, well, the Comprehensive Plan is a guide. If you go against the Comprehensive Plan in rezoning 1,057 acres, that's not using it as a guide, you might as well throw the whole thing in the trash. It's, it was just a waste of time. And I would like to invite anybody that wants to come to New Carlisle to look at this area, and especially come in the early morning hours, and then in the afternoon when those workers get off, to see, experience firsthand all the traffic, all the mess. And it shouldn't take six minutes of sitting there waiting to turn into, to make a left-hand turn into our little grocery store. And I guarantee the traffic's going to get worse again once they start working on the Highway 2 divergent diamond mess. Once construction starts there again, people are going to shift back to Highway 20 and New, and to Chicago Trail. And it's just, we were not built for this. It wasn't meant for this. And as the previous speaker said, they, they cited so many reasons, and I was really unprepared to speak tonight, I was still, I'm still cooking dinner, but I, I agree with them. And it's just, we don't want it. And when are our voices going to be heard? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Michael, I believe your hand is up?
Yes, thank you. This is Mike McManus, 51940, Lilac Road. I've got two brief points I'd like to make. First, it's no secret to any of us that we have...
Mr. McManus, could you, could you move your camera down a little bit? We can see...
I'm sorry, because of connectivity problems I'm having, I either, either have to hang from the ceiling or you can't see me. And I, seventy-five, I'm too, too old to hang from the ceiling. So as long as you can hear me, you won't see my smiling face, and that's not a big loss, as you all know. Anyway, I'd like to reclaim some of my time for that. Everyone knows that there's a lot of division in this country. And bad actors like China, Russia, and Iran are trying to divide us more and more every day with propaganda. And it's, it's great that we are able to see those who govern us in person. And I certainly respect that some of you may not have supported individual items of the budget, but I find it astonishingly irresponsible that anyone would have voted against the budget for our county. I just don't understand that. And I think it's an insult to democracy and an insult to all of us citizens that...
Mr. McManus, I'm sorry, you have to stick to non-agenda items during privilege of the floor.
Okay. The second thing is, I agree completely with Dr. Servelli and Mr. Crusoe. I know these things aren't on the agenda tonight, and when they are, I'll be there in person. But the, this county, this body has already prohibited solar power, which is an energy producer. And now we're thinking about adding another set of data centers that will suck up energy. And I know you have a very tough job, all of you, because of the budgetary problems that are going to come up because of our state government. And you have a responsibility to, again, the next time the budget is up, to get a balanced budget. So I understand the fiscal responsibility, responsibilities you have, but I think as, as Dan and Dr. Servelli said, it's too soon to be thinking about more data centers. It's not too soon to be thinking about other ways of gaining tax money, but just way too soon to be thinking about more data centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? All right, seeing none, I would like to note that our next committee meeting will be October 28th and our next regular council meeting will be November 11th. With that, I'm sorry, November the 12th, that's right, that's a, that's a Wednesday, November the 12th. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Shetzel? Hold on, Mr. Catanzerite?
I know we're not supposed to address the audience during privilege of the floor, but I, I just think there's a lot of misinformation being spewed tonight. And I, I think it's unfortunate. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but I take exception to the terminology of arm twisting. No one's twisting my arm. I take exception to that, Dan. Water usage, it's not happening with me. I'm not getting, I'm not getting phone calls. The water usage component about Amazon, we have been fully informed, there have been studies done by Peerless Midwest, a respected Midwestern firm headquartered out of our county. They have studied the water usage potential for the Amazon project, both the initial usage and the additional usage. And we were informed that they would not come close to utilizing the full capacity of the aquifer, so we did make an informed decision on that. We're not in the dark on that one. Conjecture about construction jobs, wells running dry, some of these things, we know there's a lot of construction jobs, we know there's not a lot of permanent jobs, we were informed of that. But they're high-paying jobs that do provide a good, honest wage. So that's, that's why we, we have been making decisions on that. As far as an NDA, there is no NDA on this project, to Mr. Servelli's comments. We know the company's name, it's WHB. It's been out there in the, in the news media who they are. I mean, I just, I think it's unfortunate that people are saying things that are just not true. Curb appeal and aesthetics, you know, as far as the looks of it now, it's under construction, it's not completed yet. So I think we need to at least give it a chance to get completed, to see what kind of landscaping is going to take place at the end of construction. For someone to say that they know somebody's meeting, that we're meeting with people, each one of us individually, I've not met with anybody individually. That's not, that's incorrect. I will take Mary Countryman's advice and I'll, I'll read the article from Indy Star. But I think it's just unfortunate, there's a lot of misinformation. I think there's a chance tomorrow night, I wish I could go to it, I have to work unfortunately. There's a event at the Holiday Inn on Douglas Road, Mishawaka, Indiana's Secretary Energy, Secretary of Energy Suzanne Jorowski will be there. She's the Secretary Energy, Secretary of Energy and Natural Resources. She's going to be speaking about data centers. There is a fee, unfortunately, involved to attend it, it costs $15 to attend, but I'd recommend, that might be something worth looking into, if somebody wanted to get more information. Whoever put that together, the GOP or whoever did that, it's a good idea, so. I know we're not supposed to address, I apologize, but the misinformation is just hard for me to sit here and take.
I do want to address one thing you said. I think when Mr. Crusoe said arm twisting, we can all define that term in different ways. It has no, you know, we can't, we all could see one approach as being arm twisting, where someone else may not see that as arm twisting. There are certainly many meetings going on. There have been meetings with individuals and with groups, you're right. I haven't been in an individual meeting, but I'm, I believe other people have. And so I think we need to give our audience some, some, some breadth, some leeway on the terminology they use. So I'm sure what Mr. Crusoe sees as arm twisting, maybe you don't, but maybe other people would. Okay?
Point well taken.
Okay. All right, and with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.